Thanks. How are we doing? Are we close? Ready to go? Meetings. I left this meeting. Five fifty-two. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. For its purpose, the board will govern lawfully with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal application. Diversity in viewpoints and sufficient understanding of issues. Strategic leadership more than administrative detail. Their distinction of board and chief executive goals. Left through rather than individual decisions and future rather than past or present. And correctly rather than reactively. Hey, well called. Johnson. Here. Moen. Sharon. Smith.
Here.
Bitovich. Here. Right, since we're gonna lose Gary in about seven minutes. We're gonna deviate from the agenda before we approve it. This is Gary Platsay. You have been leading us in the states and. You have a new vehicle, moving vehicle. So I do know that there. Hard that I turn. Yeah, yeah. It's a little man's pressure consistent. Now where it's. I can create a permit and make it like a little crop top thing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
It's been fun. It's exciting. Can't say, you know, our staff is wonderful. So that's what we do. It's kind of a, kind of been a long and hard decision for it. And then the series why would we? It's something that I have to do. So I'll miss all of here and. It's fun. So thank you.
Thank you for your service and we will miss you as well. Absolutely.
Like all of you.
You mean you're not gonna be watching meetings regularly? You're not gonna stop?
I've got the school margaritas.
Okay.
If I made a margarita.
It'll be all along. Okay. All right. Just one place to take a road. Take a, take a quick. Okay.
Okay.
Hey.
Wait, you got kids and grandkids about? Start eating dinner someone.
It's great.
Want to start with the, so I've got to do my work. See, uh. Oh, but I am straight. Once you guys have fun. It's like I'm sitting here all the time.
Channel like inner Gary. Kind of bad. What would Gary?
Didn't you call on the book?
Yeah.
You guys.
I think we were just.
Alright.
Okay. Uh, it's hard. Uh, so either. And you can turn off the fan during.
It's like when you.
That would be the meeting very short. Right? There are a couple. Rather than safely. Okay, let's see. So, um, I don't know at what point, I forget if you can bring it up at the end. Where it's all the question discuss while I'm reading, while you're reading, and that you. Yeah, why don't we do that? So we can do that with the Mondo's game mystery. And I can keep because. And then, uh, and then in terms of approval of the agenda, um, we would like to add under, um. Um, let's see. Under the superintendents before, we'd like to add that charge questions and an action plan updates. With those two updates, do I have a motion of third? Second? The vote. Johnson. I. Sharon. Bitovich. I. Okay, let's see. Do we have any public comment this evening? Sorry, was there any public comment this evening? Um, no, we do not. It do not happen. Alright, and then let's see the consent agenda. Do we have everyone we need on the personnel? Yes, we do. Okay, very much in truth, but a motion to approve the consent agenda has written.
Second.
Johnson. I. Sharon.
Hi.
Bitovich. I. The way it's been known, we're to the board director's fees. I know we've worked out the dates and so I think we're probably a resolution. Yes, we updated the resolutions on. You see it's titled resolution to declare vacancy. And we entered the dates, if anyone could just make sure we write the right dates in special room. Alright, so we have that effective today, Gary Smith will be resigned from the board. And we have sixty days to fill the vacancy. Um, and we're gonna have the board statement of interest qualifications. They need by August eighth, I bet that was something that everybody. And we can put it, we can put it fine, that might be helpful when said four, four o'clock. Okay, four P M. And then we're gonna interview the infected, needed on September first. I did not know, I didn't put the times, we want to have a specific times. That's also gonna be a work session and a special meeting. On September first, on September first. But, I mean, I.
Special meeting to do the interviews or?
Special meeting to do the interview.
Okay.
I mean, I feel like if. We start, I mean, five thirty, right, in which we can start. Interviews. I mean, yeah, other people before including us, so I mean, five, five o'clock is probably the earliest I can get here. Five o'clock. Twenty-five or? Five P M.
And then people, I mean, there's gonna, you know, like you several people, so if somebody can't make it till six thirty, they're wanting to read them last or whatever.
Have a work session that same day, do you want to? You mean say me? So begin, I don't mind beginning the work session before, but I don't know.
But you even figured, but.
I don't. I'm, I'm. I'm. Yeah. Let me think. Interviews first. Session again. I think it might depend on people's availability. I mean, I might get it people that forces. But I guess for the sake of today's conversation, let's just do five P M and work.
So the place. Sounds good.
Um, let's see. And then I guess the big thing is that the appointee will serve.
Further remainder of years.
Further remainder.
Somebody to approve the resolution.
That's, should we read it or have we gone through enough? I think you should, uh, read it, so it's on record as accepting the resignation as well. Uh, resolution to declare vacancy being resolved that the board of education manages spring strategy fourteen accepts the resignation, Gary Smith. From the board of education effective July eighteen, twenty twenty-two. And meeting for the resolve that in accordance with date law, the board declares a vacancy in the school director. Declares a vacancy in the school director office that will be filled by appointment by the board within sixty days in accordance with the following procedure. One, interested person is invited to send a letter to the board with a statement of interest in qualifications by August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Two, the board will review respective candidates on September first, twenty twenty-two at a public meeting. Three, to be eligible for appointment candidate must be a registered lecturer of the school district and a resident of the director of district in which the vacancy exists. Four, the appointee will serve until the next regular school by annual election in November of twenty twenty-three. At which time an election will be held for a successor to fulfill the remainder of the expired term. Uh, and this will be signed by the board president and the secretary to the board in twenty-two, twenty-two.
I apologize, do we have to put in there the criteria to be a board of director member? Cause there's other things besides just living here, do we have to have that in there as well?
Didn't, I just, I took it straight from the CAS. In our, uh, announcement that we're gonna put out in Bolton and on our website, we're gonna put that you have to be a resident and some other.
Qualification. And then somebody else that does, I know that either you or Suzie like check off the signatures, I know there's no signatures involved here, but just that to make sure the information is correct. For the.
You can make that a part of the packet, so they can check off on all the things that they. We can make. Clear to provide accurate and up-to-date information that includes you from the interview.
So the result can start here something.
Indeed. Um, do we need to determine the questions this evening? Yes, we can, uh, you can, I think you can do that later on in board development under. Well, if you wanna do it now, you'd have to do it during the discussion of the resolution. So make a motion for the. It's all separate. It's separate. This is really just the. Right, that's why I mean, they're just approved the resolution for a couple of details to post later. Yeah, and you can maybe make a part of board self-inflations. So I make a motion to accept the resolution as written. Sure. Johnson. I. Sharon. Bitovich. I. And then according. Yeah, so. We're gonna invite two guests up to join us right now. I'll introduce them once they get seated. Remember, do you have? That works for you, or you can stand or whatever. So to my right is Walt Cooper. He is, he can talk more about himself, but he is a retired superintendent. Colleen Casillas, a retired principal, and these are two of the three member team that conducted the focus groups that we, we started after some of the safety and security issues that we experienced. And learned about in January, February of those years. So, um, the other third person is Cheryl Hobbs, and she's also a retired principal. So I will turn it over to them. And then also in your packet, we have some things that we've already started to, to take action on, um, since talking with, uh. With Walt and Colleen and Cheryl, but just in, just in general, so we'll. Kick it off to these two. Thank you all.
Uh, I know that you received this in, in your board docs, but just for use of, uh, reference to some pagination and that's. There's a hard copy there for you, but, um, thanks for, um. Offering us the opportunity to come before you and give our report because there, uh, and explain our report, if you will, because there's like anything. Um, a lot of this information is, uh, can be either ambiguous or, uh. Misconstrued out of context or outside of, uh, some real constructs around that meeting. Problem with question and answers, and that's where we really want to, to spend our time. Uh, I trust that each of you, um, have reviewed our summary report that was included in board docs and. Um, so we want to, uh, not take too much time outside of going over what we, uh, categorized as our recommendations and. And primarily going over our recommendations with the idea of answering any questions that, uh, may have been generated upon your review. But before we do that, um, I will make a few introductory comments and share some pertinent background information. Um, that we need to provide for some, uh, some perspective and context, because as I said, there's, while we try to be as clear and direct as we can, um. In print, sometimes, uh, any, anything that is narrative in nature, um, and not perfectly quantifiable, I need some context added to that, so. Um, and as Dr. Lang said, I'm, uh, my name's Walt Cooper. I, um, recently retired, just, uh, one year ago, uh, retired as, uh, superintendent of Shion Mountain School District, that's in the district for twenty-one years. Um, I've also served as superintendent in very small, um, rural, called Elcott School District in Eastern El Paso County. Um, and was a fifteen-year classroom teacher and principal prior to that. That's the perspective that I brought into this, um, work.
And, and I worked, uh, for thirty-two years, I retired in, um, two thousand and fifteen, so I've been retired for seven years. I worked in Harrison School District as a, I have, my background is elementary education. I worked in Harrison School District for ten years. In California, I was a bilingual, bi-cultural education teacher for three. And then I worked in Shion Mountain School District for eighteen years, ten in, um, elementary school. And then eight as a principal at Gold Camp Elementary School. So kind of a variety of, um, background, but primarily elementary school. And our third partner, Cheryl Hobbs, um, we got the date mixed up on this fourth thing, so she booked a trip that, she's in Munich right now, so. Yeah, you know, so her background is the middle school, started off as a middle school math teacher, um, and then in Harrison and then worked as a principal. And an elementary school and now as a consultant, which you probably know also looks for your school district, so that's our third partner.
Can I say Cheryl was not a part of interviews, uh, where it was affecting teachers that she may have been working with.
By, by design, we might maintain that separation, so we'll keep. Um, so, um, we, we share that information because anytime there is, um, you know, a narrative report based on interactions like this. Um, there obviously is inherent bias, there's perspective and there is history that we bring to that, and so that's, uh. Not that that's even a little bit of bad, that's just the, the way that we function as humans, and so we want you to have that, uh, little bit of filter behind that. So, um, as we start first, the first thing, uh, uh, precursory information, we, we wanna make sure that we pass along is to say kudos, uh, to the board. And to the district's leadership, uh, for venturing down this path, and, and by path, I mean committing to being, uh, strategic and proactive and data informed. Uh, both quantifiable and qualitatively informed, uh, when it comes to establishing priority, uh, priorities and problem solving and looking at systems improvement. You know, knee-jerk policies or administrative actions are always the, the quickest and easiest, um, responses to any issues that arise. Uh, but they're never the most effective and they're always the least sustainable, as you know, so. Um, again, you should be commended on this work that was new to us, um, new to us as in that we virtually, with, with the exception of Cheryl's perspective. Uh, in her work, we knew really nothing about Manitou Springs, even though we've lived right next door for thirty years. Um, knew nothing operationally of this, of this magnitude about Manitou Springs, so it was a great learning experience for us. Um, and also provided us an opportunity to really sort of start with a, with a blank slate, uh, in that regard, and, and arguably this work, um, is, is new to you. We, um, in the, in the context of, if when we started this, we really had, um, we had one year's worth of data available around climate. School district climate from, from the previous year's climate survey, which was a, which was a new venture then. Um, during the time that we were conducting the work and by the time we finished, we had two data points, uh, with last spring's survey, but still that, all of that work. Um, especially in terms of, um, informing, uh, systems change and system movements is really in its essence. So, um, but, but you have to start at some point and you have to start somewhere, so, um, so good for you. And so this idea of gathering narrative feedback as some checks and balances and as another perspective to some of the quantifiable feedback that you're gathering through your surveys. And other work just was not a common approach or practice in this district, but, um, hopefully if you see some value in this, uh, that, that will continue. Uh, because you're well on your way. Second thing I wanna mention is the manner in which we were approached for this work, um, and the intended outcomes that Dr. May charges with really set the stage for our being able to. Engage in some really powerful conversations with participants, um, without prejudice, prejudicing their responses. That was one of the things that we were concerned with as we started thinking about how we would step into this work. Uh, because, uh, you know, undeniably, um, the timing of this, we initiated this work. In the midst of some significant turmoil and, and unpleasant upheaval, um, in the district, um, and, and alongside the district's continuing engagement in response to some of those trouble. Uh, issues and, um. Far beyond their, their control, obviously, but we were able to keep our focus, um, on a broader set of objectives, um, and, um. A lot of credit goes to the folks who were, um, who were, were part of our groups because commendably they were, uh, they were able to do that as well. We really, we really didn't find ourselves going down rabbit holes that really didn't look forward. Um, and that was our primary objective, but our concern that maybe we would get sidetracked into that, but that didn't happen, so that was great. Um, and third, I'm pleased that our work, uh, uh, on this project was over time. Uh, when we first started, we really didn't have, we, we knew when we were gonna start, but we really didn't have a hard end, a, a hard stop to this work. And I'm glad that we sort of let that flow and it, and it extended over a period of time because, um. From beginning to our final report, uh, gave us the privilege of watching, um, and learning more about Manitou Springs School District. Um, and engaging with, um, Dr. May and her team, um, and also gave us, uh, the ability to question. Uh, and talk about some of the ongoing district level work, um, that was already in progress or about to come underway, that really integrated nicely with. Um, serendipitously, integrated with some of the findings and some of the recommendations that we had in our report. And for example, uh, my guess is you undoubtedly noticed in your review of our report that. Um, where we saw the greatest disconnect, uh, between expectations and outcomes, um. And hence the majority of our recommendations are rooted in human resources, systems, policies. Um, and, uh, not all, but, but most, and what we learned as we became more familiar, um, with where the district was, was working and the internal workings of. Um, Dr. The May and her team, uh, work, was that they had already identified many similar, you know, gaps. Uh, they were, there were already plans underway, um, to install a director of human resources position, um, a decision-making and leadership level position who could address many of those issues that we had identified. Um, so the intersection of our work and our recommendations with what we learned or saw over time was going on, uh, with, um. Uh, your, your leadership team was both validating and encouraging, so we really, we felt good about that, so, um. I'll pause here and before we talk a little more specifically about our recommendations, if you have any, any questions, uh, or thoughts that you would like for us to address. At this point, uh, we're happy to do that, or otherwise we'll receive what the information is in.
There's a lot of longing through, which is exciting, because we can check off a lot of things.
I, I agree, I agree.
A lot of this cultural change, training, bringing people along, expectation set and all of the one.
Yep, and, uh, and as we get, as we talk about some of this, this, uh, little, a little more detail, uh, about the recommendations, I think it's important to try to. Um, really grasp why that is the case, right? I mean, it, it is the, the, what, what is the underlying reason why those things need to happen? What's the catalyst for things being in that situation right now that they're focused? Cause if, I think if that's, um, if that's misunderstood, I'm not sure then that the design, that what goes forward in designed action is really, is, is really clever. Right, it's really retarded, um, but it's not rocket science, right, which is, which is great stuff, it's just important work, so. Um, so we brought down our, um. So we brought down our recommendations into three, three categories based on the charge that Elizabeth gave to us, and so we have procedural recommendations. We have policy recommendations, which obviously is is most directly germane to your work, and then we have training recommendations. And so we wanted to make sure that what we provided was actionable, that it was manageable. That it was comprehensive in in terms of identifying what was the lowest hanging fruit and also the best return on investment. And so it's certainly not a the a fully comprehensive list of everything that might end up in an action plan over time. But it's a, we think it might be a great start, so. The first segment was procedural recommendations. And one of the things that we identified as a critical component was around the idea of mandatory reporting. And so you saw in the in the precursory information, the questions that we actually posed to folks around mandatory reporting. And in summary, we. There there was almost unanimity around. Understanding what the definition of mandatory reporting was, who was a mandatory reporter, the district's training. Around that that all employees are engaged in around mandatory reporting was referenced over and over and over, all of those very good signs. But then, as that transition from the input of putting it in front of people to the output of how effective really does that relate to our practice? One of the the first recommendations that we came up with is is a more streamlined. And real time digital manner in terms of making that report. So right now, if you're if you're not familiar with that, the the mechanism is to access a. A forum on the district's website, download that form, complete that form, download, forward it to the distribution list that's on there. That works, does it work as well as it as it could, right? Is there is there a way to improve that? Because some of the issues that always, it doesn't matter where you are, what size of district or 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 location. The workflow of mandatory reporting always seems to be an issue. If it's not very intentional and almost simplified for everybody, because there there are so many places that it has to touch. And especially when then it ratchets up one level and now there are external agencies or external folks that have to be included. And so we don't have control over all of that. But what we do have control over is how efficiently. The data is communicated, transferred and archived among inside the district, and so our recommendation is much is to. Design or evaluate an implementation of something much like. A tech support service ticket. Right? My guess is that when a tech support service ticket is entered, that goes and is routed to the without. Without copying and putting in a pony envelope and delivered by courier, it's routed to the most appropriate person immediately. Then it's routed to the other folks that need to be involved, it's archived, so there's a time and date stamp record of when that happened. And then it's easily shared electronically wherever it has to happen. Again, that's not really high level, high tech stuff. But it is one step up that is probably against some low hanging fruit from where we are right now. That could be proactive in helping with a number of circumstances. Not that you have experienced all of these skills, but. It's by chance that you haven't, because most of us have, most of us that have ever worked in this realm have. So the this approach not only envisions greater efficiency, it also envisions greater accountability. And those are the two things we were really working for, is how do we make sure that our mandatory reporting processes are efficient and accountable?
Consistency also by having that way so that everybody knows this is how it's done, it's consistent. Anybody can go and drop it down, it's not like, where is that paper, where's that form again, you know, and trying to track down a form, it's like, it's on the website, there it is, quick and easy.
The second under procedural was communication and this. You know, this light, this recommendation likely, we believe, is far and away holds the most potential for the best return on investment, because. It it involves so many touch points for the district, from athletics to. Mandatory reporting to safety, to parental involvement, to community engagement. We talk about communication all the time, right? I'm sure it's in your your core values, I'm sure it's in your operating procedures. As it should be, and and we always talk about this, but and so one of the things that that we saw very readily is that there there was no scarcity. Of of providing information to staff, to parents, to community. Multiple attempts over multiple platforms, multiple venues and avenues. But there was a frequent response, and again, this is not solely germane to Manitou Springs, trust me. That the information did not stick with intended audiences, and so again, the input. While looks great and comprehensive, well organized, well thought out. The intended outcome of that, meaning that people are in are well informed, wasn't sticking. And so is that anyone's fault? Likely not, it's probably more a sense of. Anticipating that the manner in which the message is communicated is the manner, it is the best manner at which that that. Messages receive. And so our recommendation is to undertake an audit and evaluation. Could be internal, could be external, could be. Service or subject matter experts, but a real an audit of the methods and both both the platforms and the the content. Of those communications to gather feedback from the recipients as to why, what would make it better? You know, we heard a number of responses while when we were talking, as a perfect example, we were talking about Safe to Tell. And we, you know, we'd get the we'd get the response, the first, you know, would look up and go, oh. I think I saw an email with that in it, I remember, I could probably find it if I went, so. It it stuck a little bit, right? But is there a way to improve the communication? Or to strengthen the communication so that it not only sticks but resonates? Now, can you do that with absolutely every facet of a school district, you know, everything from the soccer schedule to. Checking out graduation camps? Yeah, probably not, but again, identifying the most critical communication. Issues, platforms, ideas and mechanisms, and then not just assuming that they worked. But checking and validating that did that information stick?
And to all three stakeholders doing that, so from the staff's perspective of each of the schools. From their leadership team, Dr. Domain's, you know, that group down to her leadership team and then to that staff, and then also. From each of those schools to the parents, there was communication, and so. Again, checking to see parents, do you feel like you know who's communicating, how how was it and did it go the way you planned, was it enough and those kinds of things? As well as students, not for, you know, not forgetting them even in the elementary and middle school. Ages, obviously, and obviously high school, so to all three of the groups, the stakeholders.
The next segment was policy recommendations, and in this segment, we began again with mandatory reporting and paralleling what we. Addressed in terms of procedural. There, while the the procedural recommendations talk about, excuse me. Ensuring that that the policy is accurate, the policy is clear, and then that there is a. The the expectations are are. Are fully communicated. Oftentimes, we rely on, and and I'll I'll make a further comment about this in just a minute, we rely too much on policy. To be the guiding document for staff behavior, right, or for parent behavior or for more behavior, right? And oftentimes, the manner in which policies, especially policies that are derived from the National School Boards Association and Casby's model policy work. Really are not. Well, they they clearly are many times not user friendly. But many times, they're designed not to really be user friendly, because the user friendly component, as you're probably well aware, isn't accompanied regulation or exhibit. And so what we would, we highlight both policy and procedure and the recommendations about mandatory reporting, because. We think that once a the the procedure of. How we are going to increase both the efficiency and the accountability of mandatory reporting. We need to make sure that's sustainable, right? It can't leave the district when between the ears of somebody who was responsible for leading that, when that person. Leaves the district. It it has to be, it has to be codified, it has to be sustainable, and we think the best way to do that is by an accompanying regulation or exhibit. To policy, so once the policy is right. The administrative regulation that really can act as the playbook, right? To to what is expected of of anybody that is in the realm of mandatory reporting is important. Editorial, I my editorializing to that is, I actually think that back end regulation part of it is much more important than the policy part of it. Understanding that both of them are important. The next one is is highlighted and characterized as social media, but it really, the these are very intertwined. The communication, the the mandatory reporting, the safety, the the professional boundaries, all of that sort of stuff, there really is no way. All of these things surfaced as recommendations because they they followed the same path, right? They navigated through all of the conversations that are said. And to my comment again about policy, your existing policy GBEB, which is is staff conduct and responsibilities. Talks about has has the Casby model policy language and some additional language in there that's that's very good. I don't know if any of you cross reference that policy and and took a look at it as you were looking at this report, that policy is massive. It is, it is lengthy, so to to expect someone to understand. Or to know, even know right where to go in that policy to identify question, for example, you know, is it okay for me to friend? My my students on my on my Facebook page, right? Is the the policy. The policy covers, as it's written. You are well, you as a district, I'm not an attorney, but. I spent a lot of time with attorneys, you are well protected. And and are well shielded. In in immunity sense, right, by the language that's in that policy, that's what purpose it serves. It really does not help people operationalize how they should be. How how they should be behaving and performing in in the social media world. And I'm going to turn it over to Colleen, because she has a couple of really specific examples that were aha moments for us.
And and I thought they could help both. Well, for you as well as obviously the staff, the principals and things. They it was shared that the idea of. The the teacher, this was a teacher saying, I have no idea whether I it's okay, I think it's not okay for me to do Facebook, but it is okay for me to have be friends with. Student, my student, students on Instagram. And then another teacher that was sitting in the group said, oh, no, 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 neither of those are okay, we don't ever be friends with anybody on social media, and. So then then that conversation evolved to, well, emails, you know, we're sharing our emails because of COVID, and so you had this kind of. Gray area of COVID complicating a little bit of that, and so it became very clear, and then one of the people said. They were in a district in the in prior years in which they were not allowed to have any social media contact. Until after August of the senior year in which that's that child, no matter what year they were, so K through twelve. Once the student graduated from high school and they were in August of that year, then a former teacher, any of those. Could be friends with that person as an adult, basically. So so they were throwing that out as, you know, these are the different things, but and and there was not a feeling of. It was a feeling of unknown, they wanted direction, saying, you know, what should we do? We don't want to get in trouble, we don't want to do that, we know it's kind of a sticky situation. And what's okay and what's not okay, we'd like some guidance was the the real. Quest, I guess, from the the groups that I had interviewed, so I thought that was helpful to share.
And obviously, this this entire dynamic has only been exacerbated. Exponentially because of the pandemic and and remote learning and and, you know, that that we. If if we didn't share text messages and cell numbers with kids, or, you know, we weren't constantly involved in the digital. We may have never, you know, it was hard enough to reach kids, even even with all of those tools at our disposal, had we. Had we had artificial barriers around that, it would have been even 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 worse and more difficult, so now that we've sort of let that genie out of the bottle. What's the appropriate way to put it back in and where and and to Colleen's point, nobody argued. My, it should be this way.
Right, they they.
They they were asking. It's it's just, you know.
And and they were a little nervous about the idea of they weren't sure what the what the guidance was and what they should do, and there was ambiguity in the same school about what the rule was. So I thought that was a good information to for primarily a principal too, as well as superintendent and board.
And again, the as we as we segue into the training recommendations, what has happened both through the or what you've seen. Hopefully, you've seen or heard through the procedural and into the the policy and now into training. The the primary thread that joins all of these or that's woven in here is is around. Boundaries, relationships and understanding, right? That's the, as we said, the low hanging fruit, if you will, that. That might not be so low hanging in general, but it's 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 at least simple in terms of its definition. And so as we talk about training, and as a precursor to my comments around this, I want to take a second to call your attention to some. What we think is probably the most important context to all of this, and that's the context of what's initially highlighted at the top of page three. Of the report, and it's what we colloquially refer to as the the quote small town effect. And it's important to understand, this is not meant as a as a criticism, nor does it come with a level of of judgment or disdain. It's simply a fact, and it's a dynamic that was repeatedly identified by adults, whether they knew they were identifying it or not. And, you know, typically, the larger the culture and or the larger the organization. The more diluted or dispersed these intersections become. But and again, we're not here to assert that one community culture is better than another, or that one is is. Easier to manage or more difficult to manage than another, we simply urge the recognition that it exists, because that really. Needs to be a perspective that is is held, understood and considered, it's not an excuse. But it is a it is a dynamic and a reality that needs to be considered as you think about policies and regulations. Because if there was one size that fit all, this would be very easy, right? Our task would have been to go to research somebody else's policy, somebody else's procedure, somebody else's rules that would. Solve some of the issues that we found and say, here you go, do this, and so those are out there. But what worked in Cheyenne Mountain may not work in Lewis Palmer and might not work in Ford District forty nine and might not work in Quell. So, which is the beauty of Colorado School Districts and the uniqueness and control that local boards have, but it does create additional work, obviously. So again, especially as this is as as this affects staff training and policy development. We just want to highlight that it needs to be a construct that is that is considered, so. One of the things under mandatory reporting, as we talked about training. Obviously, any new policy, any new revised policy or revised procedure. Or or new reporting mechanism obviously has to be trained. That training obviously has to be designed for both effectiveness and sustainability. We we don't want that to be personnel specific, it's personnel change. And then, and and thirdly, we want to make sure that it, as we talked about in the communication section, we want to make sure it's. Um, and then, uh, and, and thirdly, we want to make sure that it, a- as we talked about in the communication section, we want to make sure it sticks. So even though we think we may have the, the greatest plan developed as an input, we want to make sure that the output of that was successful, that it stuck and folks, folks understood. And here's a perfect example of, um, where that looks really good going forward and then all of a sudden stops. And the example we shared that, um, you know, we know where the mandatory reporting forum is. Um, our safety and security officer director is, is really good about helping us and responding to us. And we, we work in a culture where we feel, um, you know, protected and, and, and whether it's, it's better to overreact than to underreact, all of those things, right? Which are all great things. But on our current form, we have this checklist of six or eight things, right? So there's child abuse, there's neglect, there's several, a, a manual of options. And we don't really know what any of those things are. So we know we're mandatory reporters. We know that we have a responsibility to engage in this mechanism uh, both, both legally and, and ethically, morally. But there's, there's still some gray areas around, well, when do we do it? How, how do we, you know, how do I as a middle school math teacher make the call that this qualifies as a neglect or abuse situation that needs to be reported? So that's the backend that we talked about on the front, the frontend and designing the tools and the mechanism and the interventions might be the easy part, you have to make sure they stick on the, on the. Um, but again, the, the training can't be designed until you know what you're training around and so that becomes the policy of the process and procedure. We talked a lot about safe to tell, we talked probably more about safe to tell with kids than we did adults, which is good. Um, and, um, um, what, what I, what I learned and what I perceived in the conversations about safe to tell were no different than the conversations that I know that I've had with folks all over the state. And again, it's about the input and what is the expected outcome. Um, but as we, uh, because I, I can guarantee you, and, and it says this in the report, many school districts, and I probably could have said all school districts and been accurate, um, are void of extensive and specific training on how best to use safe to tell. Um, it's not just as simple as, uh, a- and all across the state, the approach has been, we need to have an assembly, we need to make sure kids know this, we need to get this information in the Thursday packets that go home, and we need to put up the posters on the wall and get refrigerator magnets at home with the number. And we've got this comprehensive reporting mechanism to keep everybody safe.
That's the first step.
That's a very small component in the first step, but there's really so much more. Whether it's safe to tell or another, uh, another anonymous, um, uh, reporting mechanism, it, it's still all the same. Um, so again, it's, it's really taking a step back and thinking about how do we measure the effectiveness? We know we've got good inputs around this intervention, how do we measure the effectiveness on the backend? But as we started talking a little more about safe to tell, that's where we, um, we really started to hear the, um, small town effect, if you will, resonate and start to bleed into those other areas. Um, and there were comments about, well, you know, there's a hesitancy to use it because although we say it's anonymous, this is a small town, right? This is a small community, and so it's not really anonymous. Because as soon as, as the assistant principal or counselor, whoever, whoever it is engages with a student, everybody knows who made the report because everybody knows who was there. Or, you know, well, you know, I, I'm, I'm a mandatory reporter and I work in the school, but I'm also the youth leader at my church and I coached the softball team, you know, in the summer park and rec. And so parents circumvent safe to tell and they'll come to me because they know me, but that puts me in a bad situation. Again, with no judgment or criticism around that, that's the dynamic that happens in small communities. Um, I know I've, I've worked there, I've lived there, um, and, and it's, like I said, it's nothing that's solely germaning or specific to mandatory springs. But those are the, those are the interesting pieces that need to be considered, debated and discussed as you talk about what are the most effective interventions to reach this outcome of making sure that people feel safe and confident in using anonymous reporting. Right? So how do, how do we pull those back? Um, a- and, and start over with a, with a plan to do that. Same thing around professional conduct, right? Um, the, the, um, relative, um, informality that happens among community members and school staff and parents. And when I say those groups, I might be talking about one person, right? Um, and so here, here's a, here's a perfect example that I lived. Um, at one point in my career, I remember, um, it sort of struck me with a very uncomfortable feeling as to whether I really should be allowing my daughter, my middle school daughter at that time, to have friends over and spend the night at our house. Um, well supervised, no, you know, shenanigans going on. But if there were four, four friends at our house spending the night, are their parents seeing those kids at my house as the daughter of the superintendent? Or as the daughter of a parent and one of their friends? And my guess is, it depends on if things go good or if things go back poorly. Um, and so there, there are no necessarily hard and fast rules to preempt those kinds of things in small communities where, where culture and community and a family nature is really, really important. But there does need to be intent on how you are going to structure what the expectations are around these things. Because if you're not intentional about those actions or those interventions or those expectations, that's when things can go south very, very quickly because then everybody is left up to their own interpretation and their own judgment. And humans are powerful creatures, so.
And I'd like to add something on that. Um, along the lines, um, it kind of falls into the, the training. Um, and it doesn't necessarily, when I say training, I don't necessarily, you know, someone outside can just simply be the principal or, or inside, um, group. But the idea of if I am a teacher at a school and, um, I need to have, or let's suppose I'm a principal at a school and I need to have a difficult conversation with a teacher, um, there has to be the idea that there is a separation between the fact that we're na- and this is not the case, I'm just using this as an example, um, that we're neighbors and our kids are best friends. And so I, as the principal, have to remove myself from the personal section of that part of my life and say, I'm gonna talk to you now as a teacher and some of the ways in which I need you to look at your own teaching and to approve and those kinds of things. Same thing with teacher having that conversation with a parent at a conference. So I, as the teacher, parent comes in, we're sitting and having a conversation, helping those teachers, those staff members, um, differentiate between, I am still gonna be your friend, this has nothing personal about the fact that, you know, we're gonna go gardening or hiking or whatever on the weekends, but I'm in a professional mode right now and a professional way, this is what I see as best for your child. And so to be, the idea of being honest, and let's face it, no human beings like conflict. And, and it's very difficult for humans to deal with conflict and any, and some more so than others. And, you know, there's that program, I'm sure you're familiar with, um, difficult, having difficult conversations and those kinds of things of books and things. How do you do that? And it's more than just reading a book, it's, it's the idea of modeling, teaching, ex- expectations, um, you know, all of your part of. There is the huge benefit to living, I grew up in a small town where everybody knew everybody's business. And so there's a huge benefit to that, and yet it also can be difficult because I, um, I as a person who, um, might see that person and personally will hesitate or not be honest with that parent and saying, hey, your child needs help, your child is struggling with reading. And, you know, these are some of the things, oh, I don't want to really do that because I don't want to hurt their feelings because I'm gonna go writing courses with them or something. So, um, there's that, and that kind of, um, is, is number three there under professional conduct is that piece of what is an appropriate relationship? And when we talk about in this section, um, and it was interesting when we were interviewing, we asked the people that question, um, that the variety of, of groups, stakeholders see, it was interesting, they, there was always kind of like appropriate. So there was always like, well, what do you mean by, there was, you know? And I, I think not just in a, you know, physical or inappropriate way, but just in general, what is appropriate relationships if you are a staff member and I am a parent or a teacher? You know, what is that and delineate it out, you know, um, clearly, um, from a training, you know, expectation standpoint? So that's kind of what we're in front of.
What, uh, a, a, a fundamental, uh, uh, leadership fa- foundational skill, uh, really is about making sure that, that we, that we don't assume individuals know our expectations, right? I mean, that, from, from the very beginning of, you know, we're setting a goal for your professional growth this year and here's how we're going to measure it, that's how you evaluate your superintendent, that's how principals evaluate your teachers. But there seems to be this i- in, in thirty-five years, right? I, I, I never made that real strong connection to, I still, I should be doing that same thing around interpersonal relationships and expectations for professional, personal and, and external behaviors with my staffers, because that's all I can control, right? I don't have control over parent behavior, I don't have control over student behavior outside of school, those kinds of things. But I think we just, you know, we typically think, well, I can draw those boundaries for myself, I, I don't have a problem with that. I know I can feel what's inappropriate and what's appropriate. Uh, and I'm not afraid to have courageous or difficult conversations, so everybody else can do. And that's just, that's just not the case, it's just not the nature. And so, um, that it, 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 it seems to fall by the wayside part too often and I'm not sure that that shouldn't be one of the highest priorities that we have because I, I would, I would guess that, that would solve many of the other issues that we typically spend time intervening, um, drafting policy, drafting regulations and trying to fix on the backend.
The idea of communication is the key to successful relationships, you know, saying exactly what we would do.
So, um, that is, is our relatively brief summary of, of our report. I'll, I'll be known as brief as anybody would like. And, um, but I, I would just close in, in saying this, um, the, the first time, once we finished with our groups and we're just starting to put this together and, and had our first debrief meeting with Elizabeth, I made the, I made the comment, um, you know, th- there are no loud alarm bells being set. And whenever, whenever I, I venture, I, I, I consult through CASB with districts all over the, all over the state. Um, and that's, that's the first thing I always have an eye out, right? So for is, well, am I gonna step into something that they don't even know is there? And if I do that, how in the world am I going to get them to, to the point where they can do? And, and that, that is simply, just not the case. Um, and so that, that was, again, that's a, that's a credit, uh, and, and should be celebrated among the board and the district's leadership and community. Um, ev- everybody has opportunities for growth and improvement. Um, and sometimes you can't see the forest through the trees, right? That's why we, that's why Elizabeth asked us to, to do this work.
And I have one additional.
You're in a really, a really good place with a lot of really good people. Um, and what I can tell you from my experience over the last eleven months, traveling the state, doing superintendent searches, um, that's not the case everywhere. So, um, k- kudos to all.
And the people love their community and their schools. All of the people came, they, you know, they wasn't like, oh, I hate this place, I don't want to be here anymore. They loved their, I mean, as a general consensus, all three of us, um, heard that, felt that and saw that from their, their words as well as everything, all of the people that, and they didn't, um, it, it was very objective because they didn't know us at all, you know, so.
What questions come to mind for you all?
I'm glad you liked GBEB because we just, we did it in part.
And as I say this, as, as I say what questions you have, uh, what I will offer is if I realize that this is sort of your first one. We are, we are happy to, to come back at some point in the future and have a further conversation or discussion if you need time to percolate on this and discuss it as well too. But if there's, if there are any ambiguities or anything in what you have in front of you, we'd be happy to. So I'm just literally down the streets.
Well, thank you all, thank you, Colleen. You're welcome. Thank you for sweating with us this evening. Yeah, I did put the water, it's okay. Yeah, and Elizabeth played with everything, it's like, I think she's always having to communicate that we're doing this work. And, uh, I think we're even far to bridge that.
I agree, and some of the new notification systems that we're gonna be rolling out in August, Kat and her team. Yes, I, I just don't think we can over communicate, especially on something new. And I, I just want to say thank you to all three of you because each of the members or the participants, I didn't know participated in this focus group. Sometimes I would say, oh, I met with one of those people and they just felt comfortable and they felt like, um, listening to, listen to. So thank you all for doing that. Just real quickly, I just wanted to share a few updates. As we all know, we had the community engagement forum back in January, that was really the catalyst for doing this sort of focus group work. And then, um, we commissioned this focus group work, this, the board has done the GBEB. And, uh, we have really strengthened some significant aspects of risk and threat assessments. So that's gonna be ongoing, and I think Uvalde is another example of how there were some signs in the community around that threat. And what, what is that relationship of law enforcement also look like? We have, all of our leadership team has been, uh, trained in true speak, and that is by McGrath, McGrath Training, and Natalie participated as well. And one of our, that's built into our action plan in terms of true speaking, was the one to five and using these, these, these processes. And also Marsha and, and I have been trained in Title IX, as both investigative people who can train trainers. So we're gonna continue to roll it out. Next steps, uh, Jamie and the school teams, uh, back to school nights around safe to tell. They're just gonna be just more visible in, in those processes. In the first thirty days, they're gonna have s- safe to tell with all, all students, third through twelfth grade. Sometimes that's a bold start, but we just, uh, wanna do that sooner, and so that's gonna be part of the school's plans. Then Human Resources, we hired the HR director, so that's exciting, and we're excited to, to move forward. Uh, within our leadership tree, team training, we're gonna have ninety minutes of sexual harassment, misconduct, discrimination, bullying for all of our leadership teams, so we'll be moving there into that direction. Uh, GBEB, all of our leadership team will participate in code of conduct and the sort of boundary setting, what are boundaries made professionally, and especially in smaller towns where you may have known somebody for a long time, which is a great thing, and how to use social media. The idea too is that that training would happen and that would be filtered down into the schools and into departments. Uh, we are then going to train our individuals who would be investigators in Title IX or Title VII, those processes. We're gonna train them, that's a ten hour course that takes so long, it takes some time for us to do. And then just generally speaking, our action plan includes that Level Two point six, which I think we're gonna transition to quickly. And then we just said in our weekly updates, I s- I communicate with the community weekly and it's very easy for me to add some tabs to that to say to tell, so they are always knowing exactly where that, that sort of muscle memory to get to things easily. And then, uh, to the audit perspective, that was fantastic. Shane has been doing some consulting work with us in communications. He's recently conducted a communications audit that Kat and I have looked at and went through. And, um, I should think as we get to the DACT charge question, that could be something that we might want to include there. So those are some things that we're working on and so it's all for the full semester, so. Anything else? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Governor.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for being boardroom, it's a lot of room, just in general, on behalf of children. So, thank you.
So, I do want to, I don't need to go through all parts of that, I don't know how you all want to structure this, so we've read it. In each packet, you had twenty-one, twenty-two, the things we accomplished, and then the twenty-two, twenty-three. And really the, the idea is that some of those things stayed on because they're, they're not one and done, they're ongoing. And so we wanted to maintain some of those, um, but just want to know how you all want to, to work through the action plan. Do you want to just know high level of leverage point one? I can't go through the data and explaining as I mentioned, but it is, is, is available. It would be the most helpful, I think, if we could look at leverage point number. We can look at leverage point number six because I think. We can look at leverage point number six, because I think from the communications that we conversations around communication that we've had tonight and today.
The high level would definitely be good though.
This is still in draft form until get up until the start of the school year. But leverage point six is the one that, you know, I think we've talked about tonight. And then as we transition real quickly into the DAC charge questions and even maybe get a what is one of the themes of those, we don't have necessarily words for them. But the ones that are new towards the end, that the Board of Education under specific, I'm looking at specific actions engaged member under level points. Second, I'll add a little under specific actions. So the Board of Education will plan partnership with superintendent quarter or community engagement. That was something we wanted to get to in our retreat today. We did. And so we can save that to a work session in August. Does that sound okay? And then other aspect that we that's through through some of that community membership and partners when like Natalie and I met with the community groups, I was asking some questions. They just said some, we had a dialogue around how to make work from the DAC more available and not just available to the committee members. So we've already consolidated and created and just added some ways that we can post DAC related matters, the agenda, the minutes, who's on the committee. So we'll have that in place. But I just wanted to to highlight that for you all in place. That was an outcome of the the community members meetings that we had.
I did have, go ahead. I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. I I did have some thoughts on key leverage three with NTSS. And this is, I know, a very high level district, really part of NTSS, not at the school level. Perhaps it's monitoring of processes and receptions and feedback. But I don't see a lot of actual discussion about how NTSS is being serving for identifying the need of students particularly around academics. Is that within the building plans?
Well, it's in the building plans. There are some that connect specifically to yeah, it's specific in the building plan, but let's see, hold on. So if you look at those those indicators of success. That database problem solving. The SAT will will be using formal problem solving processes. So those protocols to identify its behavioral or academic.
But it says nine eleven. Is that by September eleven or is that grades nine eleven?
Um, that's actually, it's referencing that rubric, the NTSS rubric that shows like so the others, two, three, and seven are referring to those aspects of the rubric. We just couldn't tackle it all at once. So we're trying to identify which ones are the best. Does that answer that question?
Well, kind of, yeah. I mean, I guess. Like I said, I don't want to get too tacky tacky about things, but I mean, that I would expect, I know you you've got, you know, great first instruction to your instruction. But I guess that would be, you know, here from buildings during there, reporting, monitoring resource that they're doing.
So how specifically in school are they identifying?
Yeah. So I don't. So I guess when I think of what we talked about, and I know we showed some good data and some good growth and looking at that. But when we think about kids catching up after COVID, I know, you know, nationally and even locally, we're seeing kind of almost an inverted curve. Like the kids who were in good situations and were learning, kept learning. And kids who weren't learning didn't learn, right? If they were always struggling to learn, they exacerbated in many cases. And so then where is where are we doing our part and managing to catch those kids up, identify them, catch them, figure out what we're doing. And for me, in my mind, that's NTSS. And if this is high level, just focusing on process and process improvement in the inputs and that. But then what it was happening in the schools, one one way or the other, I love that information.
I think that's very good places in those school monitoring reports where you can see what's when you if you looked at new past, you know, data versus NTSS, you're going to see very different data. Data and so.
I did look over Kendall Short's reports and the parts you've got and achievement or data.
Yeah. So there there are attributes for identifying.
Yeah.
Might look similar with, yeah, we can do that. I'll actually add that into there's a place in here where it's supposed to report out and they report around their leverage point. But specifically, I'll ask them to report out on those specific aspects of NTSS. So that's the sort of high level. I know the leverage points have stayed the same. They'll stay the same next year as well as we've we've promised our our school staff. It's not, we don't change each each year. It's that trajectory.
Takes a while to get good out of all.
That's right.
It's a big action plan. A meeting. I'll say it again. It's a needy action.
And some of the things that we do know that we learned was when we started at late start Wednesdays, we did NTSS and PLC the same day. That was too much for for staff for a lot of reasons. Then in the second semester, we moved to just one meeting type. And we realized that they the the schools were asking for more continuity. So maybe the elementary school, main elementary school was doing PLC. And then middle schools doing NTSS, NTSS. That meant that our special service providers couldn't PLC together. So what we've created now for the whole next year is that all schools will be doing PLC on this day, NTSS on this day. So staff who's built between buildings can be know what what's going on. That's something that came out in the time series. So I guess a quick transition is what do you all think for the DAC questions? I think just actually at least kind of action plans that she put in action plan and DAC charge questions, retention, retention of staff, was that need for us and into? Another question I think is very important to us is attendance and absenteeism. We have some significant cultural work we need to probably have a dialogue about as a culture. And what I mean by that is excused absences. Excused absences are excused for a lot of different reasons and with not much continuity in decision. So a family trip might be excused where that's that's not typically what is approved at the state level around excuses. So we we I believe we believe that we need to engage parents and staff in that dialogue so that they don't feel like it's being done to, parents don't feel like it's being done to them or the family. So that's, I think we're going to need a lot of community engagement on. And then just, I think communications in general, what like what's working for them and what's not working? How do people want to get feedback? And we also have the the end or potential bond in the future.
Yeah. It's not even be bond question, just like how are we going to address these facility needs?
Yeah.
Right? And then that would indicate we need some, you know, for community and who's on that backlist, start researching what that means. And then understanding what a variety of courses of action are.
Yeah.
They can bring to us.
On that point, we did report with Iron Lumber as our leadership rep. We have put out the RFP for an architect, architect firm, because we because we know the middle school moving to the top and key build was really not what the voters wanted and were that price point for that particular bill. So in this action, in this plan with the owner's rep, was that the the master plan will be revised. And so essentially investing, what does it mean to invest more resources down here for middle school? What does it cost to shore up this building and to present to the board to you? And so that's going to be going on. So there will be some community engagement as part of the change investment. So I'll share that with you. So maybe maybe that's not necessarily part of the DAC because it's already going to be going on as part of the community engagement with the with the architect. So love to hear what's on your mind. I know we don't have everyone here tonight, but.
Yes, that potential and communication, not just seat that, but communication from that to administrators where their building, their principals, or just that's holder administrator, I think retention and communication from how they go together is an excellent that question kind of feeds back on leverage point number one. So I'm a huge fan of that one.
I I was interested in communication this one in general. We talked about potentially looking into what a communication policy or plan would play. I'm kind of intrigued to hear what some of these DAC folks, their community, how to do that. And even just how to tap on this information, whether reach, I mean, there's just so many things about communication. Like, how do we share what the school's doing?
I agree now, it's been a constant communication.
And we're not special in that, I guess.
I guess.
And we know that people like to see information in different ways depending on the user. So so if you all are okay, then the retention question, the communications question, and one third, we can stick to two.
Well, the attendance probably is, sounds like that's a big issue, but definitely doesn't need parents involved.
So go, okay, I'll take those three and form those out into longer questions that have remember, but they have a little bit more meat to them. So it gives the community members some some focus. Is that okay, those three?
Sorry, I don't want to be, I'm really very tired, so.
I'm glad you're hard to get the sound.
Do you think you, if you want to take some action on this tonight, or I've come just, we can wait till August. Why don't we wait, if we wait till August, once they're they're kind of flushed out? Okay, thanks. So that's all I had for. I'll see where we are. We did. Um, let's see, the first section is the second reading. So that one, I don't know if we need we want to go through and then.
I read through, I mean, I didn't have a problem with this.
I agree. So I mean, people for the second reading are AC, AC dash R dash one, AC dash R dash two, AC dash E dash one, and AC dash E dash two.
Johnson.
Hi.
Sharon.
Bitovich.
Hi.
Okay, for the next session. Do you have anything to? No, many things. We're just changing, removing that previous language to just include and problem solver, problem solving. So after I got that feedback, I sent it back to Employers Council and they already read. So that that language is, I think, sustained and connects. There was the dialogue around the retaliation, and I think we found a place for that to be increased. So once this all happens, we can retire that other one that was causing this, I think, even for within our own policy. And then the last one was that conflict of interest. It's policy. Policy GDEA. And then back and forth with Employers Council multiple times. This is when there might be a situation where someone is grandfathered them. You can see a lot of edits there. That last paragraph. And and essentially that that person is who would be the supervisor is not the supervisor. It's 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 someone else. So but they can still receive potential assignments from them, but there's no supervision in that matter. She said this is just a complex one and we just need to evaluate it closely. But that those are the three main things that I just adjusted from the first, the initial reading. To the conversation earlier with John, I do believe that GBKA dash E, that exhibit as part of the complaint process will be very helpful in keeping this, you know, for for staff members.
Mary Jackson, how are you feeling?
Yeah, I think I think that it's on GBK, English GBK are probably at the bottom left, and that makes sense. I think the conflict as far as, you know, supervising of needing a camera. Immediately, immediately, there was actually staff, but that's also important as we block off conflict of interest. So I think of those two changes, both seem appropriate. I don't think I've got anything wrong. What's in each compliance?
I'm comfortable with two. And then in terms of getting feedback on that, um, you know, this is just a push. And it has a feedback to incorporate.
That's right, move approval of the first reading of GBA, GBA, GBEA, GBK, 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 E, GBK, R, GBK.
Second one.
Using that as a little reading.
I know. I've been reading all of it. Johnson.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Bitovich.
Hi.
Okay, and then we just have that find that second reading. We have the equal education opportunities that should rest in super attendance.
And there was nothing, no changes to that one.
A motion to approve policy.
Oh.
Oh, GB, GBB. No, no, J, sorry, JV, I need phonics. JV, JBB, and JH.
Second, second.
But in some way, I just slowed him GB. Or GE, I'm sorry, I don't want to change it from that one from previously.
That's right.
Okay, that's better.
Yeah. Don, Johnson.
Hi.
Fair.
Bitovich.
Hi.
Okay, and the board development. Can you give me some legislative updates? Just have two very quickly, that clean water in schools and childcare centers, that's a hospital twenty two, fourteen fifty eight. It's it's going to affect any school that have kindergarten, fifth grade or sixth grade, depending where your elementary sits. And we're working right now with the Department of Public Health, hopefully El Paso County. Essentially, we have to test the lead, any drinking source within the schools. And so we are working on with the state and our our local county officials to get the the policy, the the methodology around collecting this data. So we have to by May twenty twenty three have done the testing and have a resolution for how we're going to do that. We're going to try to speed that up because we don't want, if we know there's lead and we need to go start as soon as possible. So I wanted to show that to you all. Keep you posted if there's anything major there. And then initiative sixty three, I just want to bring this up. It's it's not on the ballot yet, but it is something that advocacy wise, many school districts are taking a strong stance around supporting this initiative. Essentially, that one third of one percent of all revenue would 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 come to the come to schools versus going back to taxpayer health and trying to get those tax credits. So it's a, it it could really push a lot of money taxpayers that wouldn't require a tax, a vote to taxes. But it's just in getting onto the ballot right now. So I I share that with you because I don't know what the board wants to do in terms of once it goes into ballot, we we are gonna, I would favor a resolution supporting it. Be comfortable with that, to give you to share more information.
Fun one, I mean, I've got some idea of what the impact is. I mean, I I see the numbers appear, but I was basically one summary that either has a million dollars, ten million dollars, hundred million dollars. I mean, no, I don't know.
Yeah, basically, I want to use quote, but it's if we can do that, we can do that in the August meeting.
Because it's some sort of pro con out there. And if you're twenty three that I've got, it seems to be helpful to.
And I think finding something about affordable housing that looks like it's a similar.
Yes.
I'm interested in that. So it'll be interesting if that.
They were not able to, I saw them articulate what it was. So that was.
No, I hear you.
Um, there is something coming down about FMLA, please.
Yes, and we have to make.
We have until January, I think.
Look, January and essentially, it's you, as a board, you have to take action around if we want to offer it. The majority of boards are not offering it because we already are now offering short term visibility.
And that means the action, I don't want to.
We have to.
Take action, then we have to do it.
We have to take some actions.
Some say, okay.
Suzie said it's by December.
Okay.
So we'll we'll make sure that we don't.
Yes, I don't have the. And it's one of those things that sounds really good, but when you look at the way it's submitted, it's still staff and yeah.
Our short term visibility is why now that we have it and the districts are saying no. Would add any expense, not just to us, but also to employees. I think they just go against the rules. You did, you did enough on it, okay. Thanks, that's all for the list.
Okay, meeting schedule. You talked about what continuing to work with that first Thursday and third Monday? Is that what we had said, this first Thursday and third Monday?
I think that's what we have, although, it's gonna be the second Thursday and the fourth Monday.
Okay.
So they love it when it's second effectively, and then it looks like in September, we're on the first Thursday and the second Monday.
I just have another Monday meeting, and I'm looking to see as the calendar's out throughout the year that it's not in conflict with our meeting. But it's a second, so we're good, you should be fine, I should be fine.
We've, we've got amazing schedule for the second Monday in September. To Christian on the board.
Right, but that could be a quick, special meeting, right?
Um, well.
Probably.
You weren't gonna be able to make it on the top. That's like, yeah.
It could be, it could be.
Or depending on what time we start, if it can be a five-thirty start or five-star.
August twenty-fourth. For the question.
Because my meeting doesn't start till six, and it's, um, remote, so I need to run home, so I could be at our meeting or. Then I are, who's this?
In terms of the work session, that I basically have our classes in September twelve. So that's September first, we have a process of resolutions starting, well, that's the work session, it needs to be either before or after the interviews. So we're gonna have to, we'll have a special meeting on September first. But it really gets started by P M, it runs. If you all want, we could just have, and I know we wanted to get in the habit of having two work sessions, like, um, have a, a more robust August eleventh work session.
Wait again, sorry, I'm looking at the dates, I'm focusing so hard on different conflicts.
You know, are you thinking, you're gonna be more robust, because we'll be reviewing the applications, or? Well, I was just thinking that, um, you're, you're just gonna get the applications, and you're gonna select that night, too. So that's gonna be.
On which night?
On the eleventh.
Sorry, August twenty-second, if that regular meeting is swinging.
Sure, have them by the, by.
But we'll pick them up and hear them. Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's a possibility of doing those Monday meetings at five thirty, because there's, uh, the school soccer that starts at four, that's totally selfish, but I'd like to one of those. Last kid.
Five thirty, send, fine with me.
So those are the regular meetings?
Regular meetings on Mondays.
At five thirty.
I think that their things, could be, their, looks like their games are on Monday and Wednesday, so Thursday, it'd be the one spot.
I mean, realistically, we want community participation.
Okay, probably, yeah. And we'll get better prep from reading, so we'll be more efficient, I like it.
August twenty-two, that five thirty, but the work session at five P M, is that what we're making? Five o'clock work sessions, that would make me not be.
Five thirty.
I mean, I can coordinate these meetings.
So, so you're saying you're rather, five thirty should not be.
Five or five thirty, or four thirty is rough, when usually ducking out to get there.
So what about on that September first, if you all have your special meeting for the board interviews? If there needs to be a work session, others, it's after that, that's gonna be late. Do you think we should do the work session first, or you think we should have a work session at all? Can your work session be, man, we're swearing in the new guy in the twelfth, would that be? New person? Yeah, but I, I put new Gary, that's why I got it February. Pick new back, but it's new Gary.
So it might be that meeting after the first, but discussed the applicants. That we're not doing on the first as well, so I might be able to brief that up to the end of September.
I think, uh, that September first is where y'all will.
Interview, you guys can do a little stuff.
Or it's.
I don't think, just, I was gonna say interview, but discuss a votes on who you want.
On that first.
On that first, yeah.
That may be all we can do.
That's all you can vote. That's why I'm, I can put more agenda items for work session on the eleven, August eleven.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
I would rather more the, I would feel, August, September looks really, really unfortunate.
I have no work session, just.
Or charter renewal contracts coming up.
Of just a special meeting, just a special meeting on September first, five o'clock. Okay.
We have a little bit, well, we have a count on October's date, which is the end of our work session.
I'll put you guys in the jack, just show me what.
Yeah.
You said you're out of town?
Yeah.
I will, I mean, what time is that meeting?
It'll be at five.
Is that what you said, five? It'll be very late. I have a meeting that goes sort of these five, right, already on the schedule.
I'm jumping way ahead, though, do we have an L K day off?
Yeah.
That's January sixteenth, so we do it for the special up there.
Yeah, you know, that'd be a month where we, in the, the first Thursday is the day out, the school restarts after winter break. That'll move the meetings back a week, and then go to the talk.
Yeah.
So the second Thursday, and then the twenty-third, which is not Monday, I think, though.
I know, I'm sorry, I just jumped in. Like, what I did, I was like, I know that's gonna stop that, that's fine.
If you keep on the pattern of the quick session on first Thursday, and the regular meeting on the third Monday. Now, the question is, in December, you know, the January, or the president, in December, do we want to do the first Wednesday and the second Monday? Because the third Monday would be over Christmas break, and their fill would allow a long day between the work session and the regular meeting.
I do.
I don't know that one, anywhere over that, really, so.
Um, but I have to.
Yeah. Did you guys skip that? Uh, for December, maybe do the, uh, the first Thursday that we have, or maybe do the second Monday, because that's eleven days, then do the thirteenth. That's eleven days after the work session, and it's before winter break.
So December, I, I can have this.
He can't be. I'm just gonna figure it out, but I think you can, probably, December twelve, the regular meeting. Because that's a, for the budget, you have to revise.
So January, you have to call them, uh, twenty, twenty-third. February, some classes, no holidays.
Uh, there's government day, you can.
Oh, that's right.
So we'll do the right third. Oh, because, um, we're gonna be looking at the twenty-third, yeah, what's he getting? Twenty-third. And we'll do the work session on the twelfth. Oh, twelve and the two.
So I think we'll get second for the work session, but then the regular meeting, meeting happening. If we do it on the second Monday and the third Monday, it was present day.
That's like a Monday, standing Monday meeting. Um, for chief, yeah, it worked out last year most days, because the second week versus that. Forty-five minutes, so. Second, third, and fourth.
But, I mean, I don't know if we want to do that, or, try, down to three, thirteen, for February.
And March looks bad, what, and, uh?
When is spring, or the twenty-first?
Last full week of the month, twenty-seven.
So March twenty.
That must come back on, before second. Sorry. Yeah.
Sorry.
That's true.
So we, so there we get the second and, uh, twentieth. And March.
Yeah, the second.
Probably in Mexico, the twentieth. Whatever, maybe, probably.
If I know that, it's on. Yeah, March second, March twenty.
When recently, I have to push my meetings to the bottom, it's March.
So you're gonna be gone this, so that?
I'll be.
Or the twentieth?
No, March second.
Oh, okay.
And then I'll be gone, then I'll be here on.
We all want to be known.
It's bad.
Mm-hmm.
So there's six and the seventh being free, of course. If that works. And then May the fourth and the fifteenth, for that, since that's the end of school.
Yeah, when is, uh, third?
I'm gonna say, on the school calendar, graduation says May twenty-third, effective Tuesday. But probably should be May twenty-first, it's on the calendar.
Oh, thanks.
And, and I, I'm not sure, I even have to push that, maybe calendar, so the updated one may be correct by next, those that, calendar. Close that graduation with twenty-four.
Yeah. My fourth and May fifteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's always wait something for them, that June nineteenth.
Oh, yeah, and then, uh, what should we do for change, but I mean, we don't, I mean, last year was the first time we had a. We, let's not point six to the right now, just a work session.
All right, we should kind of graduation of bringing that, we can.
July, we got.
But if we get scheduled through May, that's a pretty good conference.
Oh, yeah.
It might be.
That's with vacations. Maybe in December, January retreat, yeah. But, or do we just wanna do it since, since, I'm saying?
With June?
I'd rather not.
Okay.
Okay.
And no work session right now.
Right.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Great.
Because if we're gonna do it, let's, we can just do it quick and dirty, to the budget. It was nice having you all time. For everybody, right? Okay, do you want to schedule the January retreat, or do you want to wait?
President, it's the twenty-third, and we just.
Okay.
Do another fun day like.
I mean, I feel like. Get it on the calendar, get closer, if it doesn't work, then please.
So, so the twenty, look at the twenty-third being our bonus retreat, of January? Okay. Bring it in, being in retreat, perfect. That'll be fine, because the retreat, the work session will be two weeks in.
Yeah, I make it easier than available, since we have a work system, June, and lots of other stuff to discuss.
It can be never, really, really true.
Okay.
Pitch off, so unfortunately, though, are you still have the, we need the questions for the new Gary? Or no? Cut my clothes. Elizabeth, we need to, we need the questions for the new Gary, right? We do need the question to.
So why do you want to do it?
Yeah, well, I was thinking, like, yeah, why didn't we?
I mean, if it's in the district, you have, uh, whatever reasons you want to do it, have a lot of presentation.
I had, like, what are the top three issues you think the board will be facing this? It's true.
What do you bring to the table?
My.
Why do you want to do it, what do you bring to the table? Routine interview question.
Why you? Why you?
So it happens, we both have lots of them.
I, we always ask, why, why mandatory, why you, why?
I think like a man.
And why right now?
I think, maybe engaging off of people's understanding of the time commitment, you know, commitment to.
Yeah, it's much different than the story, it has.
It is much different than, yeah, than I think people assume, it's even leading sales, so I'll be able to go into it.
I think we just started extending issues very young.
Just because they're.
Because like, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Have some graphs and all that.
Exactly.
Thank you for words, and then while we rambled.
We were thinking that we could put it into a Google form. So then, but basically, they can answer all those questions, and they can attach the resume, and they can attach the references into that. Kendall can have access, you can post that Google Doc and make it as easy, that's, okay? I like that.
So, so we have a couple of questions done by Thursday, once it gets in the bulletin.
Well, in theory, right, it's like three questions, one to advance, and then we can ask additional questions.
Yeah.
In the year, so, and, uh, so I think we're more general about it.
Yeah.
Do you mind showing them on the website where you added, during our, our break, we added a spot on the website where everything would go?
Ready to go.
It's not ready yet, but.
Speedy.
Application.
Good to be.
There's one right, gonna be right here, that will talk about it, and then there'll be one link on the bulletin here, too. Place, but as long as you're building, but I can see, not a lot of stuff on there yet, but right now, it's a, has to be, kind of link.
You can't, how you do it all with speed and style.
Lot of style.
You told there'd be a big shot on the, like, people, for how people can get to this, or some sort of direction, I don't know.
I know.
Or you prefer the, okay.
But I have nothing there.
Yeah.
We drive to the letter that can go in there, and, um, my one concern is how do we reach the pass area that's, that the bulletin does, is that they're specific? What we've learned is.
You have to put a sign on my car, I'll drag around.
A Q R code. We've learned the best way is actually next door, um, so that's through our communications, is understand. So here are the four questions, why do you want to serve on board education, to the school district? One of the top three issues, we believe the board will engage with in five to seven years.
Eight issues, not the right word, topics, just issues, topics, issues or topics?
Opportunities.
Opportunities, I don't really like. It's, well, what does that stop? Uh, why you, why now? And then, how much time do you foresee this role requiring of you to sit that through, unless they have a.
Something like it over, they're going over.
Three hours, three hours, so that's like salary month, right? Yeah, that's not how it works.
One.
Is there anything about philosophy, ideology of educating, educating well students?
When you, public education, or just?
Or, or public education, like, what's your philosophy or beliefs? You could just even say, what do you believe, what do you believe about public education? Yeah, no?
I think philosophy, I think that, what's your philosophy of public education?
Sure, ideology, uh, pondering, wondering.
Do you want to limit the number of words, or they don't think that we want them to, right?
Yeah, that might be a long question.
What, any of them, just like? Say, next response, two hundred words, something like that, just as a.
Not for a question.
Now, I just don't want the, I just don't want people to be.
You don't want a dissertation for each? Yeah.
Like, that's.
Doesn't feel like man, do, what do you think to people, what's the relationship?
You know, spend, like, hours on the, the issue of the box. Next words, third question. I just, I don't see how, two hundred is, it's not a limit, it's just the max, you can't go beyond.
Yeah, we'll stop reading at two hundred, please.
Or just think bottom, two hundred, and then, that can be.
Two hundred's a lot, okay.
It seems like a real lot, I mean.
Hundred, hundred, and, let me do it for work, now, and then you need to.
All right.
It's just a funny thing, maybe, too many words. All right, let's just.
Yeah, we have a public education, but we don't write anything.
I know it's far away, these, this is a hundred and thirty-five words.
Oh, okay.
It's maybe a hundred and fifty, or fifty?
Hundred fifty. Yeah.
Scientific. Scientific. And then, uh, just leave there, we can put in the qualificat, do we meet, are you a resident? Votes. Those are really the two.
Oh, no, it's, you can't, you can't be a felon.
Do you have such? Right, have any felonies?
That, that's kept out of whatever our policies, because it's in there, I don't remember what the whole lot of it. I would just, I would just cut Facebook.
We put in the document that's gonna be in the bulletin, a candidate for school board must be a resident of the school district and is a registered. Voted for at least twelve consecutive months prior to the election, no person has been convicted of a social offense against a child eligible to serve. Because school district elections are nonpartisan candidates, may not campaign as members of a political party, that's just straight come casting. So, that'll go in the bulletin, we're gonna, it's gonna be from Natalie, not from me, since it's George. I'll let you see what.
Okay, so you will.
Yeah, and Marshalls already reserved the. Quarter page, I don't.
Perfect. Moving fast.
All right, is that everything? Are we good?
I think so.
We had quite many hours?
No, but I think we had some good discussion. I think this was a really productive. fruitful day.
Not much luck, that was good.
Yeah. I think we dug in, I think we dug in.
Oh, yeah, and just, I think we're gonna discuss it, but.
Yeah, that's a pretty definite, it's about to go.
Until we decide otherwise. But we should talk about it.
Well, do you wanna wait until? Maybe we have our fifth member and.
I would.
Yeah, I think that helps with the.
So, at the moment, I'm in her.
Yeah, interim, yeah. I'll get a markier, sharpen.
Excellent, all right, and that's.
Motion's good.
Senator.
Uh, Johnson, I'm Sharon.
Hi.
Bitovich.
I am.